And then consideration of licenses and permits, A B C C licenses, common victular licenses, class two licenses and stable licenses. Item three is consideration of land use and development items regarding thirty-one Hunting Lane and forty-one North Main Street. The forty B update and comments due to select board, January second, two thousand twenty, fifteen day extension for filing. Notice of intent to sell, convert land pursuant to MGL chapter sixty-one B, section nine, thirty-one Hunting Lane. Item four is consideration of administration items and routine business. Finance director, the use of conservation WPA filing fee, an FY twenty-one budget development update, town administrator, twenty twenty annual town meeting warrant development update. Warrant closes January eighth, two thousand twenty. Personnel update, and then select board reports. Then adjourn to executive session, may return to open session. There are four items under MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair so declares library. Item two, MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town and the chair so declares police officers' union. Item three, MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, subsection two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, DPW director. Item four, MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and the chair so declares. Thirty-one Hunting Lane, notice of intent to sell and convert land, chapter sixty-one B, section nine.
Thank you. I do want to talk about a couple of amendments to this. I want to move the item four of executive session to the beginning of the meeting. We're going to take a fifteen minute time to go meet with our town council on the Hunting Lane property that we just wanted before we open it up to the open session. And then right after that, we're going to move the items with the land use to the first item on our agenda so we can discuss it in open session after we've had a chance to meet with our town council. So if I could amend the agenda to move item four up to the top and item of the executive session and item three in the regular session to number one, that's my amendment.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay. So I'm going to just read, we're going to adjourn to executive session and we will be returning to open session to discuss MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, subsection six, consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and the chair so declares thirty-one Hunting Lane, notice of intent to sell and convert land, chapter sixty-one B, section nine. I need a second and a roll call vote.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yan, Mr. Durensis.
Oh, it's I.
Mr. Yan.
Hi.
Mr. Waldron.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Morale, I. Having passed by a vote of five to zero, the open session is now closed and we will not, and we will be returning to open session. We're now in executive session. We're just going to adjourn over to the finance director's office and we'll be back as soon as we've had a chance to meet with our council. Sorry, that took a little longer than I initially said, but we met with town council and I'm going to make a motion for the board to, what we're going to do is send a letter to the seller that we find their letter of intent to remove the property from sixty-one B through the sale insufficient for three different reasons.
Second.
Second, and what I'm going to do during discussion, first, I'm going to have our town council, Lee Smith, speak about the three reasons why we find their notice insufficient. Lee?
Thank you. Lee Smith from KP Law Town Council's office. So as you mentioned, the town is...
Yeah, you don't touch it. There you go.
Lee Smith from Town Council's office, KP Law. As you discussed, the town received a notice of intent to convert and sell the property in question on November twenty-first, seeking to remove it from classification under general law, chapter sixty-one B. We've reviewed that notice and in my opinion, that notice is insufficient under the requirements of the statute for three reasons. First, the notice and purchase and sale agreement include property that is not included under classification under sixty-one B. Two of the lots in question are not so classified and the purchase and sale agreement is for the entire, for those parcels as well as the two additional parcels. Second, it's not within the definition of a bona fide offer because the purchase and sale agreement contains contingencies related to potential changes in zoning and also forty B approvals. And third, it's not a bona fide offer because the buyer and the seller are not disinterested parties. And for those reasons, we're recommending that the notice of insufficiency be delivered to the owner.
Thank you. Do we have other comments from the board?
Just a comment that we have a deadline. The deadline is rapidly approaching. Can you tell us what the deadline is?
The deadline is December twenty-first, so I'm recommending that it be delivered tomorrow. I'll add also that once this notice is given, it's our position that the hundred and twenty day period within which to act on the right of first refusal has not begun to run. But the deadline to give this notice is thirty days, which I'm recommending be delivered tomorrow.
And this is our only meeting between now and that deadline, so we must act tonight.
Yes. Do we have other questions or comments from up here?
Just that I support that the town administrator draft a letter consistent with these concerns.
I think we are all in agreement that the best interest of the town is to take a hard look at what's proposed to happen here today. And we have an additional agenda item about the proposed forty B discussion. I think it's the next agenda. We've actually reversed the order of the agenda so that the second item, which is the response to the notice, we're discussing first, and then we're going to discuss the forty B. I think we have a lot of views about the forty B that will be discussed next, so that's not really part of this discussion. This discussion has to do with the technical legal evaluation of a document that was filed. I would also note that at the last meeting, we invited council for the abutters and council for the developer to submit letters. The council for the developer submitted no letter in support of the notice to the town.
And we did get a letter from the abutters council.
Yes. So I think if we could take a vote on this and then we can get into the discussion of the forty B. So all those in favor? Excellent. So now we're going to talk about the forty B application, which has been submitted for two separate parcels, one at forty-one North Main Street and one at, I think it's thirty-one Hunting Lane. We have a letter from Mass Housing that initially had a deadline of January second for the town, the select board along with other boards in the town to respond to our feelings on this forty B and our support or non-support of the forty B. And the state has granted us due to the holidays, a fifteen day extension on the response to that, so we now have till January seventeenth. But I think it's important that we get on this right away because, I mean, just from discussions with the board, as far as I know, there's no support for this project on our board. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the way it currently sits, it's...
So we're going to be authorizing the board to send a letter to the state objecting to this project and including references to a lot of facts that have been given to us. We got an excellent letter from the Conservation Commission. We got an excellent letter from the Historic Commission. We've gotten excellent comments from the public.
From the planning board, from the advisory committee.
Yes, advisory, planning board. So I think our intent is to take all the comments that have been received, put them into the most powerful letter that we can write, and send them to the state in a timely way so it meets the deadline.
Right.
So we don't need for tonight's discussion for you all to regurgitate stuff that you've sent to us.
If we let everybody make their comment tonight, we'd be here till tomorrow morning. So we have received, I mean, I've received, well, probably close to twenty letters from citizens. You know, I've tried to get back to everybody who sent me letters. I know other members on the board have talked to people. We're taking all this, you know, into consideration. We're really working with all the other boards to really get a strong of a letter to Mass Housing on why this project, for numerous reasons, doesn't work for our town.
Well, our next meeting is January second, which is still well before the deadline.
Right, exactly. And I think we gave the other boards, like, a lot of the comments we got from Conservation, I know, were related to the sixty-one B issue more than the forty Bs. So now we're, I think they're going to work on getting us, I know Neil's shaking his head over there, but get us more comments on the forty B aspects so we can submit it to Mass Housing.
I would add, though, we did get a letter from the attorney for the abutters that dealt, two letters. One was the sixty-one B, but a letter that dealt with all the objections to the forty B project. And we're also going to take whatever points we can that are verified and put them into this opposition.
Just identify yourself. If you're going to speak, I'll call on you and please... Oh, yeah, we're going to, let us have a little more discussion up here and then I'll identify a few people, like I did, like Paul said, and I'm just going to reiterate, if something's been said, let's not all say it tonight again, just because, you know, we want to be efficient and we do know we are getting letters from everybody, so let's try to limit that.
I would just reiterate when we initially had some proposals for forty-one North Main Street, they varied widely, wildly. And I'd said at a couple meetings, no one in this board had ever proposed those. I heard that someone at a Christmas party was saying that this board supports it. That's just not the case. These projects have gone all over the board and we've got a lot of input from a lot of different groups. We've not taken a formal vote.
Never?
Never. We were requested to hold a special town meeting. We rejected it because we thought the proposal was not appropriate for the town. So I just, you know, I'm unaware of any town board that has supported either this project or any of the, I think there were four prior proposals.
Right.
Just a couple of this, a couple of things I'd like to see in the comment letter. I know many people have ideas, but certain aspects on it. I was on the site walk and in the local comment period, you know, there are seven aspects which you can look at. And I would at least like to have our letter, the select board summary letter at least, mention that the site control may be compromised due to the sixty-one B issue. The other thing that's interesting, according to the forty B handbook, they actually talk about how, that not often will a subsidizing agency actually base a denial based on community objections. But they said a specific example is a subsidizing agency's deference to a community that has taken significant steps to increase the supply of affordable housing. So I would like to have some discussion about the overwhelming approval of Coolidge Corner, as I think that's a very strong thing, where it looks like we're not just being a NIMBY community, we actually do support affordable housing, but this one here is just a bad fit for its location.
And two pieces of that, too, is that we have a town master plan and we have an affordable housing plan.
Exactly.
Which we've also adopted. So we're not two, we're not at the ten percent threshold and it's the reason why, at least on my list of priorities, the apartment units at Coolidge Crossing are critical. They don't quite get us to the ten percent, but with some of the other units, we would be at ten percent. And conceivably, we might even have the opportunity to exceed the ten percent, but I agree with you, Eric, and I think we should add those two points.
Did you have more on that or? Nope, just that and... All right, okay. Now I'll let you talk, Craig. Just identify yourself first, so.
Well, either, because we appreciate all of the towns that they crave bills, thirty-nine, hunting lane. What I did want to make sure was the last, or the first point Eric that you made, which is in the light of...
Sorry, Craig, the televised part. Nobody can hear you, so if you could step up to this microphone when you talk, that would be great.
Stay right there. You don't have to touch it.
In other words, please don't touch it.
Don't get hearing.
And don't look at it.
That's right. That looks safer. No, I just wanted to, in light of tonight's new information that you are requesting that the notice of intent be withdrawn or declared invalid, obviously that goes to the heart of the whole project site control element that Mass Housing cares a great deal about. And I know in fact it's the most important point that they look at first. So it's clear, I think, it should be clear that Mr. Lebarsky does not have site control if it's subject to a right of first refusal in the town. So I think it ought to be perhaps the leading point in your letter to the state. But thank you. Otherwise, we certainly have no intent to repeat all of the comments that we put in our letter to the board and we appreciate your looking at it.
Thank you.
Neil, would you just come up to the microphone?
Neil Kessler, forty-three, Page One Road. I'm taking off my Conservation Commission hat for a second and just affordable housing wise. I'm glad to hear that the board thinks that it's a bad fit in this particular spot because I do think we need to do more in affordable housing. But one thing I wanted to specifically point out, if we are drafting a comment letter, is that there are things that Mass Housing looks at, such as topology, fit with the neighborhood, and I went and looked at Medfield Meadows, the original proposal which was rejected by Mass Housing, which is an unusual circumstance. And one of the things they talked about was the density, like the housing units per acre, and I think the sixty units on forty-one North Main Street could certainly be seen as out of character and too dense for the surrounding residences and that kind of stuff. So I think looking at the kinds of criteria that the Mass Housing laid out for us during the site walk, those five elements, and looking to see the places where this project sort of doesn't fit with that, if we're going to go forward and say it's not a good fit for the town, that those areas would be specifically good to look at.
Yeah, that's what Eric has, the list of seven here, right in front of him, that's definitely what we have to focus on.
Yeah, then we talked about five during the site visit, but there are seven in the handbook.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Do I have any other comments, questions? I think we've got a clear direction of getting our letter, like, we're sending this letter to the seller tomorrow and we are working on January second. We will be working with the other boards to get our letter ready and prepared for Mass Housing.
So can we let the, maybe you already did, but we should let the boards know that they want to supplement their answers.
Yeah. I know Conservation, you're going to probably be sending us more because your other letter was really geared towards the sixty-one B.
I'm sure Planning Board...
Darrell, I think you're secure somewhere, right? I assume the Board of Health will be...
In the providing council.
Okay, great.
The Planning Board always has a lot to say about everything.
Yes. And Historic, did you guys send, well, yours was...
We did only the forty-one North Main. We have no jurisdiction.
Okay.
So we're done.
Okay, thank you.
Unless we have more comments.
You just said you're done.
She's done unless she has more comments. We got it.
If you'd like to speak, walk to the microphone. Go ahead.
If I could just quickly, John Garrison, thirty-three, Hunting Lane. In response to what Eric said a minute ago, I'd just point out in the supporting documentation to both of his applications, not the application itself, but the other, the cover letter that he specifically claims that we don't have a housing production plan or a master plan. So that is something that should go in.
Both are factually incorrect.
Absolutely. Right. Go ahead, Paul.
Oh, okay, you know, Hunting Lane, this is probably superfluous and redundant, but being anal, I didn't realize tomorrow was the last day. Does it have to be hand delivered? Is, I just don't want, I think they dropped through the cracks because of...
It does not need to be hand delivered. We'll deliver it in properly, go more notice.
We're happy to work with town council to get a letter via email, whatever works for the town. We're not trying to speak one eye or something.
Just to identify, I think this is council for this...
Attorney Christopher Elbin for the property unit.
Great, thank you.
All right. If we have no other comments, we're going to take a brief recess so we can, I think probably a lot of people are planning on leaving, I assume.
Wait, wait, no, wait.
We have to take a vote for... To what?
Didn't we?
We took a vote on the notice of insufficiency.
Yes, but don't we want to take a vote to put together a letter?
I think at January second, we will have the comments from the other boards, so we'll vote then for our letter for Mass Housing.
And we'll have a draft letter. We'll have a draft cover letter for the select board, which we can vote on to approve on January second.
Okay.
So we have time because we have until January...
So no votes necessary, but...
Well, I don't think we need to vote to instruct David to do a draft of the letter to work with town council, I don't think.
So I'll just make one final comment, which is, I think we...
Excuse me, we're still, please be quiet.
I think we've all heard the message from all of you, not just in your writings, but in the fact that you showed up today. So I'm wondering if I could kind of summarize it by asking, those who are opposed to the forty B project, could you raise your hands? And those of you who are here to support that forty B project, would you raise your hand?
I voted the right time.
All right, so that gives us a good sense of the message that you're sending to us is received.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks.
We on? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for the payroll warrant and the meeting calendar. Do I have a motion to accept?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Great. So now we have the consideration of licenses and permits. Jeannie has sent us everything ahead of time, thank you. I think the only one that we really need to discuss, there's one that everybody else, I think, would, should be...
The Heritage Inn, so I like where you're heading with this.
Yes, go ahead.
Do a blanket motion?
I talked with Chris Canny. Josh Ziskin was in touch with him today. They've taken care of most everything. Chris is going to do the inspection tomorrow and he has no problem with you just issuing the license.
Subject to his inspection.
Right, subject to his inspection.
So to save time, given the lateness of the hour, can I do a motion to approve all of the licenses for the alcohol licenses, the common victors licenses, the class two licenses and the stable licenses without naming all of them?
That's fine with me. Do you have a second?
Well, I want to understand this. This is related to the fire protection system, though, right?
Yes, but that has been taken care of. The repair to one of the rooms upstairs has been done. So Chris, I just spoke to him ten minutes ago.
Okay.
And we've done that in the past, not that that makes it right or wrong, but where everything's been done except for the inspection, we've approved them.
No, it makes sense, but this was disturbing to me that they allowed it to lapse and we got found out about it from the state fire marshal. I don't think that was appropriate.
So if I could, I want to amend my motion to say that I move we approve all of the licenses currently in effect, subject to the same terms and conditions as presently exist, for renewals of the A B C C licenses, the common victors licenses, the class two licenses and the stable licenses.
Second.
As set forth in the list that has been presented by Jeannie Guthrie.
Second? Did someone second already? Yeah, I think Chuck already seconded. So all those in favor? Great. Now we got a pile of paper to sign, so let's get that, so then Jeannie. Thanks, Ed.
My checkmate pen is almost out of ink.
Uh-oh.
Oh, I lost here.
Actually, here, why don't we just start down there?
Let's do another financing round for you, Eric.
Start with our, here, we'll just line them up.
I just need, this is just to go to the A B C C. It just says that we didn't have any licenses that were approved or renewed.
Where do you want us to sign on here, Jean? Does it matter?
There's five lines right there.
Yeah, this should have, yeah, wherever you can, like, sign away.
Okay.
There's a new one for you. Start with this pile.
I'm sure they will.
Nothing better than signing a blank.
Like signing blank papers?
That was the Radio O'Reilly at Nash, right?
Yeah, that's right.
By the time they get to me, there's no place for me to sign. Me as well.
Just one of the three signatures. Is that just because that's a majority or is that left over?
I think it's just leftover forms.
I think I missed that one. You just...
It's from, this is a three-member board. And we're too cheap to print new forms. I fully support.
Start on the pile there.
Then these are the alcohol ones.
But no, these are the common. What is that word?
Vicu...
Food.
Surf food.
Somebody revised vic...
Victuals, like victuals.
Probably something from Latin.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Get a couple of those.
We have five signatures before that gets to me, it's beyond me. I think somebody's signed it twice.
I've got your signature down, Paul.
Okay, so next on the agenda is consideration of administrative items, routine business. Where is Sharon?
I'll go first.
Thank you, Jeannie.
My checkmate pen is almost out of ink.
Uh-oh.
I lost here.
Actually, here, why don't we just start down there? Let's do another financing round for you, Eric. Start with Eric, here, we'll just line them up.
I just need, this is just to go to the ABCC, it just says that, uh, that we didn't have any licenses that were, uh, approved or renewed.
Where do you want us to sign on here, Jean, does it matter?
There's five lines right there.
Yeah, this should have, yeah, wherever you can like, sign away.
Okay.
There's a new one for you. Start with this pile.
Start from the bottom, so.
Nothing better than signing a blank.
Like signing blank papers?
That was the Radio O'Reilly in Nash, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, that's right.
By the time they get to me, there's no place for me to sign. Me as well.
Just one of the three signatures, is that just because that's a majority, or is that left over?
I think it's just leftover forms.
Yeah, dude, I think I missed that one you just sent over.
It's from, this is a three-member board. And we're too cheap to print new forms. Fully support.
Start with the pile there.
This is tomorrow's.
Then these are the alcohol ones.
But I know, these are the common. What is that word?
Vicu...
Food, dessert.
Food, dessert.
Somebody provides vic...
Victuals, like victuals.
Probably something from Latin.
It is, yep, yep.
Get a couple of those.
We have five signatures before that gets to me, it's beyond me, I think somebody's signing twice.
I've got your signature down, Paul.
Okay, so next on the agenda is consideration of administrative items, routine business, where is Sharon?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Jean.
Do you want me to take mine?
Yeah, go ahead, you can, we can jump to you.
I just wanted to read this, um, into the record. It's from December 4th, from Department of Housing Community Development. Dear Mr. Williams, on behalf of Governor Charles D. Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Palito, I am pleased to award the town of Sherburne a small town housing choice capital grant in the amount of up to $100,000. Congratulations on being one of the successful applicants. So I just wanted to thank Gino Carlucci, his town planner, for hauling most of the weight on that, and, um, very excited to see that.
Do you know generally what it can be used for?
Um, we have a lot of, we have a lot of pokes in the fire right now, so I don't want to speculate on which one.
I hear you.
And be wrong.
You don't want any stakeholders saying one of your comments, yeah.
Yeah, and the only other thing was that the warrant closes January 8th.
Can, can I ask a question through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, how are we doing on the hiring of the sustainability coordinator?
The sustainability coordinator had a misposting, so I had to extend the deadline, which expired today.
Okay.
So all applications had to be in, so we had seven to 10 applications, and I was just talking to Michael Lesser about forwarding those to him for his review and setting up the hiring process.
So in terms of, of time, uh, how long do you think the interview process will be, and then how long before we actually have somebody?
Well, depends, does the board want to do the, um, they want one candidate brought in that has been cleared with the Energy Committee and our office, or do you want three to come in and be interviewed by the board?
There's a lot of public interest in this, I sort of feel like it's not just us, is...
I kind of agree, I think this is a big...
I would like to...
Deal?
I'd like to also like see the application resumes, if one stands out, why waste the other two's time and put them in front of the public and compromise the current jobs?
Yeah, if there's...
You know, if there's one, or maybe get the advice of the Energy, if there's one that clearly stands out, that just seems a bit, and then we could just confirm that.
Okay.
But to have three come in, they probably have existing jobs, now they're in the public, now they're on YouTube interviewing for this unnecessarily.
We can say bring one to three back.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a good way.
I think that's a good way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think, I think it is, um, does have a lot of public interest, and I think we should, uh, we spent a lot of time talking about it, so I feel like as a board, we really should be involved.
Yeah.
If, if we need to be in the hiring process.
Yeah.
I have a slightly different view, I would like to speed up the process, so I wouldn't, I, I think it'll slow down the process a little bit, but I'll certainly defer to the will of the board.
Is it one that stands out?
Well, we'll see.
You know what I'm trying to say? Well, we meet every two weeks too, so it can't slow down too much.
You could give an update on the second and see where they're at.
Yeah, it'd be an update, it won't be on, the interviews wouldn't be on the second, but probably could do it the next meeting after that.
Considering the next two weeks, there's not a lot happening in the world, other than the holidays, I don't see much progress between now and the second.
Yeah.
Well, Sean's going to probably be busy, but...
And the, um, as far as the grand money coming in, that's, we've gotten all the paperwork for that, that's all filed, and they're going to send us the one check for 50, and then we flip 25 to Holliston.
Okay, great.
I mailed the paperwork back to the state today.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, um, back to Sharon's finance report.
Okay, um, in terms of the, the select board, there's a, was there a letter in your pocket?
Yes.
Okay, so, um...
From Allery, right? Was that the...
Yes, from Allery, and the Conservation Commission is requesting to use the portion of this, uh, the state portion of their filing, which is collected under the Wetlands Protection Act, and currently they have $6,315 in that account. They want to use $1,000 of that, um, for a new computer and software for the administrative assistance, and, um, we checked with our IT person, I think it's about $1,000 for that. So in order for them to do this, they, it's mandated that, um, that they get the select board's approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Although, do you want to read the motion, or doesn't matter? Is that an actual motion written in here? Under tab four.
Moved to approve the request to use funds collected under the Wetlands Protection Act to purchase a new computer for the Conservation Commission administrative assistant.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And you had one budget update.
Budget update, yeah. Um, the budgets are starting to roll in, I have received about five of them, and...
They're all flat, right?
A lot of them are, a lot of them are, uh, and so I know people, people are working on it, and we should have everything, um, by the, by the end of the month, and, um, as the, as the information comes in, we're data entering it into our radar system, um, so soon as we have everything...
On one note, I did by chance see the first iteration of the Sherburne School budget, the Pine Hill.
Oh, okay.
And they're going to be, they're actually coming in under budget from last year because they had significant decrease in out-of-district expense. I happened to be in their meeting, because I had another meeting right after, so that's, that's good news to start, at least.
Very good news, yes.
Yeah, I recall yours where we went in and out of the black based on the out-of-district.
Out-of-district.
Out-of-district, huge.
And we were right on the cusp and...
Yeah, even if we get reimbursed from the state, it's still huge.
It takes a year.
Yeah.
And what are those, I mean, because those can run, what, 50 to 100,000 per?
Oh, there's some that are...
There's a whole range, yeah, very severe.
There was one a few years ago that I think it was 300,000.
Yeah, yeah.
For a student, so.
Do we have any indication, George, I think you're on the bargaining committee?
It's progressing, and it's, since it's all held in executive session, I really don't want to say much more than progress is being made, and it's, I think three years ago, it was pretty contentious, and it is not this time, so...
So I didn't get a chance to finish the question I was heading towards, which was, do we, based on what you have seen of the process, do we have any idea or projection as to what the regional schools will be coming in for, for their budget?
I don't want to say too much, but, um, I think, I think it'll be within, uh, the range where they're, where they're projecting, I mean, that's, um, I have to be very careful. Uh, I think they're going to be fine.
Okay, thanks.
So, I mean, and the, because the negotiations are not finished yet either.
I, I understand, I just didn't, wanted a heads up whether there was a tsunami coming our way, or whether, sort of like, we're not...
Eight, six, 17, I recorded, I think they're going to be fine, George Morrell.
You can check it out on YouTube.
Yeah. My, um, uh, just on the YouTube thing, it's kind of a funny story, like my company, we did this like, uh, they did, the new company they work for, we did a little roast at our Christmas party, and the one they had of me was like, they made some ridiculous comment, and they're like, who's in support of this? And somebody had taken a little clip of one of our meetings with me going like...
Nice.
Kind of like the staples, he hitting the button, huh?
All right, so, do we have any, yeah, right, do we have any, um, select board reports?
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, just one, that, um, I know Representative Linsky...
Thanks, Jeanie.
Representative Linsky, um, our representative, is supporting House Bill, um, 2314, and actually I should have reached out to Sean on this, to support this too. It basically adds, uh, Public Works employees, um, death benefits if they're killed in the line of duty. Uh, there's been actually seven Public Works deaths in the last five years, and I think it's something that's a bit unnoticed and underappreciated, and, uh, really with these numbers, it's not going to be a huge cost, I think it's a good thing to do to recognize them and recognize their families and the impacts of it. I know one of the ones that happened, I think it was like four years ago in Natick, the community stole, was not recovered from that, and a few supporters similar things, Sean, but...
Were you right?
It's absolutely, there's been seven in the last five years.
I'm sorry.
So I would like to at least maybe either give a letter to Linsky, or at least, at least support it, you know, in spirit to, you know, it is our, it's our representative that actually is promoting this bill and supporting it, and I personally support it as well, and I hope the select board supports it as well.
I think that's a good idea, maybe work with Sean to get a letter of support from the DPW.
Is there enough consensus here that we can say the select board supports it?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm going to recuse myself, because at the MMA level, I've been working on opposing a whole bunch of statutes like this that provide all these guaranteed benefits for a whole class, different classes of people, on the theory that these are unfunded mandates, and so we're opposing all of them. That doesn't mean that they aren't individually a good idea.
Well, you know, it doesn't come from the community, the funding, it basically is taken out of the pension fund, that's how they're funded, because I'm actually on an MMA subcommittee for Public Works, and we voted to support this.
All right, um, go ahead.
Quick one on the same topic, um, during the heaviest snowstorm, I had to drive into Cambridge, and I drove through the towns of Sherburne, Wellesley, Natick, Wellesley, Newton, Cambridge, and except for a small section of the Pike, our roads were the best by far, with, I think minimal salt being used, they've just been really well plowed, so...
I have to say, the snow day that every other community had in the area, was my, my 10-year-old daughter was not so pleased, because I worked from home, my wife is a teacher in Natick, she had the day off, and my older daughter was sick, so one person, my, my youngest daughter, was not happy when she had to go out to the bus, because Sean had the roads clean enough that they did not cancel school here.
So we're going to get a petition from the Pine Hill students?
I think some of the teachers too.
I wasn't too popular, my house.
But congratulations and well done.
Yeah, very, you all deserve it. You have another select report.
Library, I did, well, we'll talk about library in executive session, but there's a, in your packet is, um, it's now published on our library website, and will be posted on Nextdoor Sherburne, the monthly update on, um, progress, not a lot of physical work going on right now, um, but at least, um, explains some of the things that people have seen happen recently, a little bit more about the masonry removal, and we try, I, I actually helped draft it this time, so it was more structured, so there were subcategories, and it wasn't prose paragraphs, so I think it might sort of stem some of the concerns for people that want to know more information, so.
Great.
Still a lot we can't say, um, subject to litigation issues, but, um, it's a little bit crisper, I think, so. And it, so they, it was drafted, but KP, you know, um, Tom and Rick reviewed it thoroughly first, so...
Has it been posted yet, or?
Uh, I believe it has, yeah, I'd have to confirm that. The only thing, your version is they took, there's one sentence they took out of the ver, I gave, it was labeled final, and they gave it to me on Wednesday, and Jeanie printed...
People can find this on the website.
It's on the website, and they're going to go on next, they don't comment on Nextdoor Sherburne, but they will put a notice there, they don't post it there, they'll post the link to the library, um...
Okay.
Document on Nextdoor Sherburne.
Excellent, thank you. All right, if that's, I think that's it for our open session agenda, so I'm going to adjourn to executive session, and it says may return, we're not coming back to open session, are we, David?
You don't need to, no.
Okay, so not to return to open session. Item one, MGL chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares library. Item two, MGL chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the bargaining position of the town, and the chair so declares police officers' union. And item three, MGL chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection two, to conduct strategy in sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, DPW director. I need a second and a roll call vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Dur, having a second, I'll now have a roll call vote, Mr. Durensis.
Durensis votes aye.
Mr. Yon?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Morrell, aye.